The regular meeting of the school committee of the town of Foxborough. Today is September 18th, 2017. We've got an exciting agenda tonight. We're going to start with any visitors who'd like to be recognized and then we will approve minutes. And then we have a teaching and learning highlight that I'm excited about with Ms. Macharnik and Ms. Wazaluski about Illuminate Education, which I'm all excited about. I don't know about other people.
I am.
You know, data gets me excited, so you know. Mrs. Pennelli will give us a back-to-school update and then we're going to take the second reading of some policies we read at last meeting. Ones regarding the use of electronic messaging by school committee members, ones regarding naming new facilities, ones naming existing facilities, and then there's a new domestic violence leave policy. Our co-superintendents, our superintendents in transition will present their joint goals --
I like that.
-- their joint goals for 2017-2018. And then Amy's going to give us an update on the assistant superintendent search, which she's kicked off. And we will talk about a school committee appointment to that search committee. So if members of the committee are interested, you have about an hour to give that some thought, if we run on time. We'll make our annual school committee appointment to the MASC Massachusetts Association of School Committees Convention. I wonder who that will be? We will hear from Mr. Yukna, an update on the Borough School Project, which was in the news this week, the last week, the last reporter. An acceptance of a donation for the Jerry Roy Scholarship Fund. The Greeley Family Memorial Scholarship Trust Fund will then be presented by Mr. Yukna. We'll take up any other matters. And then the committee tonight will be going into executive session. We haven't done that in a while. But tonight's executive session is for the purpose of discussing wage or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. In this case, it's with regard to the incoming superintendent. And the committee will not return to open session, so no one has to stick around to wait for that, including Mr. Everson, who once again is running the cameras for us. So, and I should note, it's nice to see Mrs. Lord and Mrs. Weiss back. We missed you last meeting.
Well, you weren't here either.
Now, we had a group of three.
That's it. You have a quorum and then --
We had a quorum.
We move things along.
Yes, we did. And I want to send out get well wishes to Mr. Connolly, who is a little under the weather tonight. So I'm sure he's watching and --
With great enthusiasm.
That's right. So, yes, Mrs. Lord.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes, ma'am.
You are so excited and jumped right in, but I'd like to, could we maybe, for just a moment, please, remember Bill Chaplin? He taught for years music in the Ahern School. Then when he moved to high school, he single-handedly is the one person who started the band. And so it had its ground roots with Mr. Chaplin, and he just as recently passed very suddenly and unexpectedly at 72 in Florida. So I would just --
I don't know the name either, so thank you for saying that.
Oh, he was, he was at the Ahern School when I started in the Ahern School. Then he came here and he was the one who started the ground roots of the band. And just a very few, few students played, I can remember, at the Thanksgiving Day Rally.
Wow.
Wasn't he also the one that brought Steve Massey here?
And he also brought Steve Massey here. You know.
That's right. I did read about that, so thank you for reminding me of that.
Yes, so, and he died unexpectedly at only 72, so.
Moment of silence for him?
I would like to do that.
Thank you, Bevy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any visitors tonight who wish to be heard from? Seeing none, we'll take up minutes. Our regular meeting minutes of August 28th, back when school hadn't started. I was reading this, Shannon, I thought, my gosh, she kept you busy that night, page after page after page.
I know. I complimented her. After I read these, I went over and --
It's all good. For just the three of us being here, we had a lot to say. I didn't have anything, any changes to the minutes.
No, I didn't either.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes, the regular meeting minutes of August 28th, 2017.
I move to accept the minutes from August 28th, 2017.
Second? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero. Thank you. And now, Mrs. Pennelli, I think we're ready for our teaching and learning highlight.
I think we're all ready for it, but I'll just introduce by saying, not only is this going to be interesting and exciting, but these two women show us how we've often bragged about the internal organization, how strong it is, and how proud we are of our educators coming up into leadership positions. And as you, as you, as a board termed it the last time we talked about it, or internal
-- Cultivation.
Internal leadership cultivation. These two lovely women are classic examples of that. So Ms. Shannon Wazaluski, our department head for English, and Ms. Alyssa Macharnik, our department head for science. Come on up.
I think, are we going to start the segment in the button on the video? Is that a plan?
So what we have to begin here is, it's a three-minute video. It's two videos that we've actually spliced together to give you an idea of what Illuminate Education is. And then after that, we're going to show you live what it looks like and what it's already starting to look like in classrooms. And we just had the first training of this the last week of August. So that's the other part of this that's so exciting, to see that it's already being implemented.
I was surprised to see it on the agenda already.
Well, we talked about it and then thought that, let's see it in its infancy, because it's, it's going to be big as far as what continues to happen. So let's see at the beginning what it looks like and have different stops along the way so you can see our growth with it, too.
Do you want to just make a comment about what it is, to put it in context?
Sure. And the video will do that, for sure. But it's a data warehouse. It's the analytics platform that can be used for data analysis. It also is a student assessment system that we can use to help provide just-in-time information to be able to meet kids' needs in the classroom, differentiate our instruction based on what we're seeing with both formal and informal assessments. And it also has taken the place of a number of other platforms that we've had. We've been able to streamline and take some away, because this is going to take care of a number of different needs that we have.
And just for context, if you remember when we used to use Pearson Inform, and when the company let us know that they weren't going to, they actually sold it and they weren't going to support it anymore and nobody else was taking over either, we were a little bit devastated, because we had just been working with that for a few years. But this is a great example of when one door closes and another one opens, and sometimes a much better one. So without that event, we probably wouldn't be on Illuminate now, but we're, you know, much more excited about it this early on. So I think it's a great idea to show it now, as we're just getting started, and then keep the committee posted as we work a little bit more with it.
Great. Thank you.
The boom in assessments of the last two decades has left us with a flurry of test scores and mountains of data. We'd all like to use that data to improve education for our students, but most of it's trapped in disparate systems and out of reach. Districts, administrators, and teachers are being held accountable like never before, but they lack the right tools to see the insights buried in all that data. Luckily, there's Illuminate Education. At Illuminate, we're educators, just like you. We believe that behind every piece of data is a unique student full of potential, and our passion is to help you help that student succeed. Illuminate's education intelligence platform was built with you and your students in mind to make data-informed instruction a reality. See all of your data, yes, all of it, for the first time in one place, so you can see trends and opportunities for improvement. Illuminate helps districts use data to shape school improvement plans and measure progress on goals, get answers to complex questions, generate state-mandated reporting, easily draw insights at the student, teacher, school, and district level. Illuminate helps schools improve teaching by making student growth easy to see and track. It helps principals and school leaders facilitate sharing of ideas and best practices, fostering an atmosphere of collaborative improvement. With Illuminate, teachers have more time to focus on teaching, give fast and easy assessments, and see the results instantly, know which students need help. Intervene early, provide differentiated instruction, and close achievement gaps. At Illuminate, we share your passion for providing the best education. Let's transform education together. As a teacher, you work hard every day preparing your children for the future. With so many initiatives and requirements, this task can be daunting. Illuminate Education's Data and Assessment, or DNA, platform can help by allowing you to quickly capture and analyze valuable data that will guide instruction and improve student outcomes. With DNA, you can easily create short formative assessments to get immediate feedback about your daily lessons, print answer sheets from your computer and scan at your desk, or create online assessments. Even add online tools to assessments such as protractors, highlighters, and text-to-speech. With rich, easy-to-read reports, you get immediate feedback. You can track progress on state-specific standards and use this data to design an action plan. Quickly group students based on their level of mastery, or direct them to specific learning resources that accommodate anything from remediation to enrichment. Now, you can make better use of your PLCs by having reports and data at your fingertips due to the whole student through multiple performance measures. Use DNA to collaborate with colleagues to identify common needs and provide relevant interventions and improved instructional strategies. With DNA, you'll get a better view of student progress, and you can differentiate instruction and dramatically improve student achievement. To see a live demo of DNA, contact us today.
Turn it over to Shannon and Alyssa, and you can get an idea of how they're already starting to implement this.
So Alyssa and I talked a little bit. We use it so far in opposite ways, which is good, because we're going to show you how we each use it. Just to give you a little bit of background, the English department at the high school has tried all different types of measurements to try to assess student growth, including writing portfolios. And we realized, once we brought Collins in, writing portfolios were much harder to use to assess year-long growth, because we could see the growth in each piece, and so it was a lot harder to track the growth that way. So then we started, we switched over to a standard-based assessment, which we really liked, because we could see the strengths and the weaknesses early in the year, and kind of attack those, and then we could see how we did by the end of the year. And then, once we heard about Illuminate, once that was coming in, I was like, we're in. So I was, and Amy can attest to this, at the training, I was like, oh, we're, I'm teaching everyone on, in two days, how to use this? She's like, no, you're not. And I was like, oh, I am. So we spent professional development time actually looking at our previous assessments, figuring out how we could create new pre-imposed assessments, and then actually putting them together. So I trained everyone in how to use Illuminate, and we put our assessments together. So, you can hit the first slide. So, whoops. Sorry, I have a slide, a small slideshow. So when we started creating the assessment, we realized that we can actually choose the standards that we want to test, and we spent a good deal of time that day discussing which standards we actually wanted to assess. And then we came to some conclusions, and they have a bank of questions that are associated with all of these standards, and they link up to the Massachusetts frameworks, and it's really nice that way. We can also, in that second picture, you can see that there are a number of different data points that we can actually look at. There's difficulty, so we can have low, medium, or high difficulty level. There's the levels in Bloom's Taxonomy, there's depths of knowledge. So all of those points are actually data points that we can look at after we give the assessment, so when we're looking at data. Oh, yes. So once we decided which questions we wanted to use, we put the questions together and we created assessments, and I actually put just a small video together so you can actually see an assessment being taken. It's going. Oh, there we go. So this is, this is one of the questions. You can see it's got a question and asks you to highlight. Here we have, I wish I could read it. Here's a poem, so it's asking a question about a poem. So all different types, this is an MLA question, all different types of questions, all different types of ways to ask questions. Because it's online-based, they have highlighting options and video options, and you can actually move text around and create, you can also type in a response, and so there's lots of different ways to get really good information from these assessments.
Shannon, are you doing this in a smartboard, or are the kids doing it on their phones?
The kids actually will do it either on the laptops or in the lab, the computer lab. So they'll schedule a time where they'll bring in the whole class and give the assessment.
So Shannon, when you said before that you can select the level of difficulty for different standards, is that potentially something that, say, special educators could use to modify assessments, where we know we're getting to the standard, but maybe the entry point isn't exactly?
Mm-hmm. Yep, exactly.
That's impressive.
And then all of the different, where their technology-enhanced questions, the masking, being able to show smaller portions on the screen at a time, and the highlighting, there's all of those features that are built in as well, and like what they're being assessed on the state assessment now online.
Mm-hmm. Right. And it will get them ready for when those assessments actually go online. And I think probably, we know MCAS is headed there, I think probably the SATs in a few years. The SATs and the ACTs will definitely head online, so this is a good way to kind of get them ready as they're coming in and practicing those skills. There's two more questions.
Oh, okay.
So all different types of questions. Oh, no, I, oh, did it, okay. I paused.
So if you could guess, how often do you think you would use this in a class, knowing you need to get to the lab or get the laptops?
These are designed to be pre-assessments and post-assessments. So one at the beginning of the year, one at the end of the year. So if you want to hit the next slide, you can actually see, once we give the pre-assessments, it'll actually give us a lot of useful data that we can use in both PLCs and in department meetings, and take a look at our strengths, our weaknesses, where we need to focus, and it will really help us drive our instruction, because we'll know where we really have to focus to get the biggest growth in our students' learning. Those are all just different types of the data that we can pull out even more. And then this last picture is just, you can look at the multiple assessments. So you have the pre-assessment, the post-assessment, and you'll have it right there, where you can see how they did in September versus how they did in May or June, when they're given the post-assessment. And then that we can use over the summer to really take a look at what we did well and what we didn't do as well in, and make some curriculum changes.
Impressive.
So we're using it a little differently in science. I took a look at the item bank for the science questions, if you just asked. And they were slightly different. I believe we had 15 items to choose from in science for extance. We have a teacher who's really excited to build the bank for us.
Oh, boy.
And, but for ages, we've been doing warm-up questions and closer questions, and we have this ongoing issue of, well, do you collect the notebook at the beginning of the week, at the end of the week? You can't stop and read every single notebook every single day and have the students have their notebook. And so what we've done is, go ahead and go ahead, click. You have some questions here, so you can answer them. We have a true或false question, that's number one, T or F. The English department is able to focus their instruction by administering pre-tests with Illuminate Education. And then an open response question as well. What advantages do you think Illuminate is going to bring to Foxborough Public Schools? And what we're doing is, we can ask these questions, beginning of the period, end of the period, for the multiple choice or the true or false. The teacher can then immediately see, oh, hold on, nobody knew the answer. Oh, everybody knows the answer. And tailor what's going on that day. But particularly for the reflection questions, the students can keep their answers forever and have their prompts. They can either write it on the page or look in their online notebooks for what the prompts were, but the teacher then has a copy as well. So if you'd like to answer these, I'm going to scan them in and show you how it works.
Oh, no, we're getting tested tonight.
Getting tested.
Uh-oh. Hope it don't fail.
And this only requires having one computer in the classroom at a time. Not that we couldn't give them as online assessments as well, but you'll see, they have these paper blanks, and we can make generic paper blanks that we can just photocopy at the beginning of the week, as long as the structure of the questions remains the same. Oh, it's two multiple choice and two open response, or one multiple choice, one open response, to give out each day. And whenever you've made your choices and written your answers, I'll show you how we scan them in.
Just give them to me. Thank you.
We're supposed to, you can write in the box.
Yeah, you can write right in that box.
Right, open response in the box, which --
Where do we put this? All right, yeah.
For those of you who give questions that have numbers in them, it's really nice to be able to see students' work, or let the students do graphing work.
Figures our two department heads here would give us the first, I think, ever quiz I've had in nine years at school on camera.
On-camera assessments. Those results are going up.
They are.
I think that's one of the powerful pieces of this. There's so many different ways to assess, quick, on-the-fly assessments, like what we're engaging in right now, being able to offer feedback immediately.
And just until they're ready, the committee knows we have other tools that we've had in place, like Galileo, and some of those other tool pieces will be going away, because this can be, this will be a little bit more all-encompassing. So some of the tools that we've pieced together before will eventually be eliminated.
And some already have been.
Is this a K through 12 product? So you envision it used in the elementary as much as the high school?
Especially with, you think about our baseline and benchmarks assessments, when we have our early baseline. We're able to put all of that information in there. We're already starting with our developing reading assessments.
And we don't know who got which. I picked students, mostly from student council, but a few of their names you might recognize.
I recognize the one on my paper.
Really quick and easy to scan them, so the kids can come out, beginning of the period, end of the period, as needed.
Recognize that.
And scan their answers. There we go.
This is a loss. This is a loss.
Yeah.
That is so awesome. What if she's scanning them? Is this them?
I got it. That's awesome.
And that's part of the tools?
And one more. And then --
Have you seen them?
I can look at how they did on the teacher view. It shows all of the answers, or I can send it to student view when they're actually scanning, so that they only see how they did as it pops up. But then, very quickly, I can go in and look maybe at the end of the period about, yes, please? I want to see all their answers and look at them to decide what we're doing the next day.
Yes. Wow. This is fascinating.
And this is the part that makes me really happy, is I can go to question two, and there's the scan for whoever played the role of Yassa. We have immediate feedback, just-in-time information, and opportunities to collaborate with colleagues.
You know that.
And then I move on to the next one. In the role of Jack Bellinger, we are consolidating assessment data into one tool. Data is available for analysis at many levels and for many purposes, and all of your handwriting is very nice compared to some of my students'. But I can go through each one then, so they can get individual feedback if they need it, or we can just get a sense of where the class is. But I think it's really important that they have a copy of their responses, particularly when they're problem-solving, or they're not answering a "how do you feel about this" open-ended question, but a specific name, three points that support this argument, that we can say, okay, this is on point, this is on point, this needs a little bit of help, but they know what their work is, because they can keep it, and then I can also look at it.
This is amazing.
It really is. It's like instant gratification.
That's what we're doing over in science, which is really different than what we're doing in English, but it's okay.
We will be doing this, too.
Yeah.
And we're working on putting together our own item bank in order to do the online testing as well, but everybody's going their own direction.
But I think that's half the beauty of it, is that it's so comprehensive and so flexible, that you really can use it the way that makes most sense for your content of your department. Like, all I could think of when you were showing and saying it was going to be like a beginning of the year, an end of the year, along with everything else, is that's going to save time. Because we often have the debate, how much assessment, how much classroom time should be taken up by assessment when we're taking away instructional time? And that is a great example of how to just get a meaningful assessment out of the way and save most of your time for instruction.
But at the same time, being able to inform the instruction with the results of the assessment.
Exactly. So anything informative that's also a time saver is rare.
And we have the document cameras already in the classrooms, and so they can come in and just, they're on-the-fly, as they call them, just quick assessments to be an opener or a closing, ticket to lead.
And tickets to enter, tickets to exit. It's fantastic. Yeah, it's so amazing.
Are we reflecting today? Oh, I'm sorry, we're having class discussion today. Okay. That happened today. I was like, sorry to disappoint, but there's variety.
But I think, I can, I love it. I love that it's in a bank, so you know how often afterwards, when, let's say that the pre-assessment showed that there were more than you hoped for, didn't understand a particular standard, or hadn't yet attained the standard? And before, I used to shuffle on and flip for examples of student work to show as to where the misconceptions occurred, and you have them all available right there. You can just click, click, and there's some examples for the class to discuss, to see what misled you, what made you go wrong, why did you represent it that way? Why did 60% of the class represent it this way? You know, so I can imagine how powerful this is going to be.
It's very exciting for your teachers.
And the other piece, too, I mean, it's to their credit, talking about, no, I'm going to do this in two days with my department. We're so excited.
That's true.
Because they had their first introduction. We had a full-day training on the Monday before our actual days of professional development. But the intuitiveness of it, and being user-friendly in entry points. It took us a year to find a solution. We looked, as you heard, many, many different solutions to replace Pearson Inform, but this one was one that we felt met our needs, but clearly was one that was going to be able to be implemented and get people excited about the opportunities that it presents.
Amazing.
It gives teachers the access to the data. They don't have to wait for it to be given to them. They don't have to wait and see how they did, and you know, at October's department meeting, they actually have direct, quick access to their data, and they can look at it at any time.
That's amazing.
We've been talking about how we can put different assessments in, and that one person can be in charge of making it, but you can get a little code to send the kids off to take the assessment. And then even though Ms. Wazaluski made the assessment, if I give it, I get the results for my students. If she gives it, she gets the results for her students. Each teacher gives one code, one person does the upfront work, and then the teachers get the relevant data for them when they give the assessment, which is really nice in terms of spreading the work around, but getting all of the information you need.
And it tracks data over time, and that's the point, is to be able to look, as students progress through the grades, interventions that are put in place, to be able to go back and say, how is the growth? And if it's not there, how can we intervene?
Right. You can address it immediately.
I assume our instructional technology specialists are helping implement this?
They absolutely are.
And then we'll probably have lots of ideas of how to take it to the next level.
So at the training that we had, we had the instructional technology, the curriculum directors, myself, all of the department heads, and some other key specialists, such as elementary math specialists. Some of those people who we know are going to be great supports for teachers, to show them all of the different tools that are available.
I would imagine this would be great when it comes time for curriculum review cycle in whatever discipline we're looking at, that this would be extremely helpful when you do that, because it's such a comprehensive tool, and it's always such a thorough curriculum review, so it'd be very interesting.
Amazing.
Any other comments from the committee?
I'm impressed.
I just want to say, I'm very, very pleased that we are doing this. This is the business I'm in. I think some of you know that. And, you know, when we talk to school districts around the country, they all have data, and they all are doing some form of analytics, but what they struggle with is putting it to meaningful use for teachers. You know, the data stay inside. You know, the data stay in silos and they stay in the central office and they come periodically and you get it once or twice a year, right? You guys have been through that. The fact that this looks manageable and relatively easy to implement and that you've already jumped on board with this, I mean, I wasn't joking. When I asked Amy a few months ago, tell me, you know, please bring illuminate education to the committee so we can see this, because I really think we need to start to push on this more and more. And the fact that you are here already is mind-blowing, but I think it's a testament besides to the two of you, three of you, to the fact that you've chosen a program that's easy to implement. And to me, what this does is this optimizes student outcomes, right? This really lets you go. And I always say that, you know, a good teacher can personalize instruction in their classroom.
Absolutely.
But can you do it for every kid, every period, every day? You know, is that, can that become standard operating procedure? And I think tools like this help facilitate that. So I'm delighted. I'm really very, I mean, I think to me, this is a testament to where we go next with the school system.
Are you the only two departments that are using it right now? Or are you, is there waiting right now?
I don't know.
Don't?
I don't know.
We have others that are waiting, that are waiting in, but as far as immediate with the department, jumped in both feet. The two of them are really our early adopters, if you will. But it's contagious. You're hearing others and then at the other levels of the middle school and elementary, how do I get on? And then they haven't even, some of them have been trained yet and they're able to get on and start looking at what are the resources that are there.
That's exciting.
The more you do it, the more people will want to jump on.
Do we have a goal, like when everyone's going to be on board with it?
Everyone has a login now. So we're having training again on October 6th on our professional development day, different levels of users. And it's organic in that it's starting in different ways, such as what you saw with English and science. But what we've said to staff is we see this as a two-year rollout to really have everyone there using it. But every single person will be using it for data entry. For instance, at the elementary level, our developmental reading assessments, the DRAs, that's, teachers are going into this and that's where they're putting their data and they'll start using it within grade level and PLCs. So everyone will be on it this fall.
Okay. So I think that's really all it takes is, even though, you know, any tool for some populations can seem a little intimidating, but if everybody during the first half of the year finds one use that they're comfortable with, that they can get excited about, the rest will then come. And I think that's our expectation. Just, you know, pick one aspect and even if it's just data entry required, you'll start looking around and see it. And when it comes to the assessments we have on reading, which can be relatively intangible for little kids, you know, we store it in paper, in folders. So this is going to be much better. We started storing it on Pearson before, but this really allows access to it in a way that you can interpret it more easily and without bothering other people. Or if, you know, an ELL teacher is wondering where child strengths are, you'll be able to see this without waiting for an appointment with the classroom teacher in the period. They're free. And if you're still at the high school and not traveling to another school. So I can see so many things rolling forward that this will make the communication easier about students. I think it's very.
I was really joking when I said it's the data that gets me excited. I'm not really a data guy. Well, I think what this is going to do for teachers and how you instruct and how you can personalize education, I think it's going to be dramatic. I don't know if you feel the same, but.
Very much. I'm so excited.
You can tell how excited you are.
I think to your point earlier though, on like, we'll go all the way down to the elementary level, I can see so many ways that an elementary teacher could look at, you know, how their kids are coming in from the previous year and where the strengths and weaknesses are real quick at the beginning of the year to find out if they've got, you know, one or two kids with real gaps or can they move right into it. So I mean.
And that is something we've struggled with forever, as every district is. How do you, how do you keep longitudinal assessment data so that if you're that teacher who sees some struggle without digging and making appointments and making calls, how can you see, is this a new problem? Is it a persisting problem? So we struggle with that all along, is how to store data over time that can inform the future teacher of that child.
It's also great because you've already invested in a lot of the assets to make this thing work.
Yeah, so I've got lots of technical questions, which I'll do offline, but this is not a cloud package we've purchased. This is a, we've purchased software.
This is a cloud thing.
This is a, this is cloud.
Okay. So it's a subscription kind of a model?
Yeah. And but the, but like I said, you know, with the document cameras and things like that, a lot of districts don't even have those in place. We've got them in place for other reasons and now it's just the technology is.
Yeah, to your, now, now, now back to you, to your point now. I mean, I was, you know, wanting this years ago, but we weren't ready for it, I don't think. And I think now, you know.
Well, part of it, we couldn't find it, to be honest. So to really find exactly what we wanted and with this particular platform, when you heard in the video, it was created by educators. Everyone within there, they're coming from being technology directors, from being teachers, from working in schools. So when we finally got to this particular platform, we're like, they get it. Because every time we would talk and have all of these different meetings with different people, they said, oh, that would be great if it could do that. And we're like, but that's what we need because we do use data to inform many things.
But you know, when we adopted Pearson about five years ago, it took us years to find that and that was the best on the market then. It still didn't do everything we hoped for, but it was the most forward-thinking and tool that was out there. And this is so much better, but it didn't exist. So I think in some ways, we as a district are ready for more data-type tools than the market has even created. So we seem to be just a little ahead of that wave where we know what we need, why doesn't anybody have it? And then this is a great example of finally something that really fits.
Well, it's a combination of things, right? It's a combination of building the instructional quality leadership team that we have here that you all represent. Plus getting the technology tools in the classrooms and available, plus the software programs being available. That's why I think this is going to be exciting to watch now for the next X number of years.
Yippee.
Thank you for coming out. It's great.
Thank you for sharing, guys. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I like starting our meetings with teaching and learning highlights. I like seeing what the. Not that, just I like, I think it shows the public too, you know, what we're working on and what our instructional leaders are working on and it's terrific.
I think it also shows the public how hard the work is.
Yeah.
It's really hard work.
Yeah. Thanks, Shannon. Thanks, Alyssa. Great job. Okay, moving right along, back to school update.
Yeah, good segue, actually, there's because one of the things I wanted to say is that when we, you know, we front-load the first three days of professional development for teachers before Labor Day, before kids come. And I always say that that gives us more preparation than most school districts have. And, you know, my latest thing is preparation pays off. It really does. You know, I know people in other districts, Chris teach in another district where you have a half-day or a day where you go in and there's like an opening day, maybe the faculty meets the principal, and then the kids are coming right the next day. And I really can't see how you could be thoroughly prepared to start teaching the first day the kids are there. With our three days of front-loading, which we started, well, within the last 10 years, I really love that model because it really allows us three professional days with the adults, really getting ready, getting trained on all the things that they will need. Beginning to talk about how the year is going to go and being fully operational by the time kids come. So we don't really waste any time once the time kids come. So that's part of my back-to-school update. Once again, school opening went very smoothly because we have great people, great building principals, and they prepare pretty thoroughly and we didn't have a glitch. We haven't had transportation glitches. We haven't had any of the glitches that you might expect. Our school population, I know people are asking, it's not October 1st yet, which is the official date, but as of today or yesterday, we have 2,626 students. And October 1st last year, we had 2,631. So we're right about the same. We're not really, we seem to be fairly, you know, leveling off a little bit. We're not, not losing many kids. By October 1st, we could be equal to last year. We'll see, or right around last year. So it seems like we're leveling off a little bit, which is good news, I think, for our district. Let's see. Bill, you had the update on the facilities and everything that happened over the summer at the last meeting, so I don't need to go over that, but that pays off too, because everything is in chip shape. We're not running in and repairing stuff while kids are here. It's already ready. But we've been around to all the schools. Everybody is busy. It's like a beehive everywhere. And it's, it's been a great opening, really. It's been really great. I know you had a couple of things about that.
Just with the professional development that we had, it was exciting to see teachers so exciting. We had a lot of choice this year based on current initiatives that have come out of the curriculum reviews, whether it's on the social-emotional learning and mindfulness or anxiety, then also curriculum, the understanding by design and building curriculum. So we were happy that we were able to bring back some choice because there's been so many state mandates along the way that it really has, to Debbie's point, where districts don't have five days, I don't know how districts do it with not having those days. So with one of the days, it was choice within those current initiatives, but it was also technology. So where Microsoft Office switched over to Teams, so many people are switching over and we had Technology Steering Committee this afternoon. And just to hear so many people jumping right in with some of the tools that have even changed since June. So people are back, they're ready, they're, they're already in the groove.
You guys would have enjoyed, you know, I always love two, two days, right? The, when we welcome the new staff. And we were right over here in the media center and the entire leadership team stood up and introduced themselves. And then, of course, the new people introduced themselves. And it was just exciting to see the energy and to hear them say why they chose Foxborough. You know, they, this is becoming a destination, right? They wanted to come to Foxborough. And then the first day, the PD, you know, I was only there for the morning part, but Debbie had everybody in tears and Todd was hilarious and.
Always is.
I embarrassed Amy probably, but it was, you know, just filling the auditorium with the staff and, you know, well, you can offer your comments.
The, the energy of, I said it before, I'll say it again, it is, I wish almost, I wish every parent could see the energy in that auditorium with our educators, our staff. Everybody is so happy to see one another, to be here and to be working for our students in enhancing the education quality here in Foxborough. It's just a great day. There is such a positive energy in the auditorium and I'm sure it continues throughout the day. You can tell just, you know, in the positive energy that our department head show here and showing, telling us about illuminate education and diving right in to, and, you know, you know that carries over into their departments. But you can really feel how much our teachers love what they do.
They do.
On that, that first day back.
It's a great day. Those are my two favorite days too. But it really is true. It's a great place to work. It's a great day to, it's a great place to be an educational professional. It's not always a great place everywhere, but it's a great place to be a teacher here. We have a lot of pride in our profession and people work together really well. Their relationships are good. There's a lot of trust and respect. And none of us take it for granted. So I think that's, that's the theme of how we come back together, is that we actually enjoy being together and we know we're going to do good things for kids. So it's a great thing to be a part of. Now. It is, truly is.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you for the, the update. I guess the message to the committee is we need to protect those five professional development days and that model of three PD, three PD days, not that we have any intent to change that, but note, note to self, don't, don't mess that up. Okay, thank you. Debbie, thank you, Amy. Second reading of policies. So let me just get, offer a thought on this and Tina, you were here last meeting, you can offer your thoughts as well, of course, but we did have, for Bevy and for, what's your name again? Marilyn's. If you guys don't feel comfortable approving policies tonight, and without Chris being here, since he's on the policy committee, we could wait. Or if you feel, I know, Bevy, you've probably had a chance to do, you've probably spent plenty of time.
I don't really even need to reread them.
Well, we can, we can make that motion.
Well, I, I know, but we, we did have significant discussion. I'm sure you've watched the meeting, but we did, we did have some significant discussion about the policy. So they're not exactly, I'm sure.
There were some things that needed to be resolved.
Same format that they were presented to us last, at the last meeting.
And, and all of them or just some?
I'll, I'll try to summarize.
Not all of them.
Not all of them.
I'll try to summarize. Let's see, I don't think there was a question about the use of electronic messaging by school committees.
It was mostly just the facilities one, I think.
Right.
So there, I mean, there were some that we could, could vote on tonight and if there's another one that we want further discussion, oh, we certainly can hold that.
That's right, but only if you and Marilyn are comfortable with that, because if you want more time, I think that's okay.
I'm not. I am comfortable.
Okay.
So let's just try to, I'm going to try to, if I, if you would help me recall what the issues were the last time. Under the naming of new facilities, comparing the old policy to the, to the new one, the new one is much more comprehensive and really explains things quite well, Bevy, so there was, there's a lot of positiveness about that. Just, just so that people know the difference, so that in the future, we don't want people to say, oh, was that changed or when was that changed? The old policy said that the, any requests for naming a new facility came to the superintendent, who then brought it at his or her discretion to the school committee.
That's right.
The superintendent will prepare for approval. The new policy says the written request goes right to the school committee chair directly.
That's right. There's more process built into this.
Correct. So there's no right or wrong, but that's a definite change of process.
And then, and then there's a period of time.
Can we, yeah.
Over which we are, are supposed to sit on it before we make a decision. So to me, it's about more process and about who initiates the, the request.
So we were just trying to parse through what's different, just so that when you vote it, it's knowledge, it's knowledge that there's a difference.
There was a request in my notes of the last meeting, there was a request on this particular one, and let's just take these one at a time. So on this naming facilities one, we said we'd strike the word new in the top. Because it's not just new facilities, but then I had a note that there was a request to add back some content.
Yeah.
Right, Tina?
Yes.
From our old version.
Well, from the, we wanted to put the language from the naming existing facilities.
The second paragraph.
That's right.
The second paragraph in the old one sort of gave a, painted a picture, if you will, Bevy, about what kind of person must be known and recognized by their peers as, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Sort of, sort of gave guidelines as to.
So we might, we might for hours want to add that.
Right, because that's, that personalization that Foxborough's always had is how you define someone who's worthy of consideration of naming something after, that would be missing from this new MASC one.
I mean, if it's our policy, I think we should move it across then and include it.
Yes, and I would agree with that. That's what we, we talked about the last.
Do you have a suggestion of where it should go?
Yeah, I think it should go in the, right before submission of a name for a school space may be made by, I think it should go right above that.
All right. So actually, paragraph two of FFA you want inserted before, just before submission of a name.
I would think so. Wouldn't you think that would be, that would.
Yeah, but I think if you and Chris think we, it flows better somewhere else, I think that's okay. But I think that's a good suggestion, Tina.
All right. So you want me to run this by Chris?
If you wouldn't mind.
No, I don't mind at all. But I think that seems like a logical.
Let me just be a little procedural for one minute. So this is officially our second reading of these policies and associated discussion. Do you all want to read through the policies again, read them aloud, or do you want a motion to waive the second reading? What's helpful to the committee?
I would waive, but it's up to, I mean, you've read them thoroughly now.
I would waive them, but I definitely would like to see the language from the naming existing facilities.
Yes, because that personalizes it for Foxborough.
Right, and it keeps the continuity with the facilities that we, we have chosen to name after significant individuals who've made a significant impact in the community, consistent with the language in our current policy. We've recently named three, three of our facilities after individuals with this policy. I'd like to see the continuity continue based on our Foxborough school district values, so.
Right.
So with, with that intended change, which can come back at the next meeting, Bevy, do you want to make a motion to waive the second reading?
I would like to make a motion to waive the second readings.
Of all four policies?
Of all four policies because we're just moving one paragraph for an insert in the next.
Yeah, and some of the other ones I think we can actually approve tonight, potentially.
Right.
So there's a motion to waive the second readings. Is there a second?
I would like to second that, please.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. And if the public wants to hear what these are all about, you can either review the, the next meeting, the last meeting, where we did read these aloud. Some of them are relatively lengthy. Or you can contact a member of the committee and we can certainly take you through these. Okay, I think that was the only change on the naming facilities that I remember. Tina, you as well, Debbie?
That's consistent with the name.
I had a star, which means okay, on memorials.
I had a star, which means okay, on memorials. Is this one else he listed, though?
Well, actually, just for Bevy's benefit, because we did make one other change at the last meeting, Bevy and Marilyn, because they weren't here. This part right here, we struck out a name with educational, no, wait a second.
You want memorials?
We, no, I'm still on naming facilities. We struck some sentences, but, yeah, we, that's, you know what, that's where we wanted to put that language.
The sentences are struck.
Where we struck those sentences, we wanted to move the paragraph from, sorry, from the naming existing facilities, there.
So, right after the second sentence?
Right after, yes, right after the, that is, yeah, in choosing a name for a school, a portion of a school, "to be considered," that's where it went.
Oh, all right.
It was up there. So, I am a little slow tonight, but that's where, and then, we struck those two sentences, where it said, "A name with educational significance should be cho," the committee also feels that it is appropriate to name schools for physical locations. We struck all that and wanted to keep it consistent with what we had previously.
Okay. And the committee wanted to just call it naming facilities.
Right.
Not new facilities.
No, because it might be renaming, doesn't it? It discusses renaming.
But notice that, old policy FFA, naming, which was naming existing facilities, has now been replaced by memorial.
Right.
So, this one should, FFA on your agenda should say, "Memorials."
Okay, got it.
Not naming existing.
So, that's where we, that is where we wanted to insert.
Correct, that's memorials. Right, okay, all right, I get it. That's the policy that's being read.
And Janet, if it's helpful, we can sit with you prior to the next meeting and go through and do this.
Okay, I mean, but I think the FF is combining two policies, right?
The FF?
So, combining existing facilities and new facilities.
Yes.
For the consideration of the committee reading, the ones listed should be the new policies.
Oh, I see, we see.
So, that's why FF, instead of saying naming new, which is the MASC, we just decided to take out new, or they're considering that. But FFA is actually named.
Memorials, yeah.
So, the existing FFA is going into FF.
Right.
Okay, that's...
Right, and there'll be a new...
The second paragraph only.
Right. And then, there'll be a new FFA called memorials.
Right.
It's confusing.
We're good, yep.
Okay, so, we have one change requested on that one, and we'll bring that back to the next committee meeting.
Correct.
So, let's go back in order of the agenda, unless anyone has any other questions about or comments on naming facilities.
Actually, I had one more, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But I think that we also wanted to make it, continue to keep it a unanimous vote. I'm looking at what we struck at the bottom.
Yep.
In the yellow.
Yep.
On the procedures, and I think we also wanted to keep it as a unanimous vote of the committee, is that correct?
Yeah, I think it should be.
That's what I, that's my recollection of our discussion last time around.
Where are you?
I'm at the last two paragraphs of the naming facilities. We determined to strike those two paragraphs.
Well, those are the old, that's the old policy.
No, this was the new, no, no. This whole thing was new, the whole, all of the yellow was new. Wasn't it? Because it's August 2016. This was the new policy.
Last time.
From last time. So, this, what was struck was what we wanted to do away with from the last meeting. I should have brought my packet from the last meeting.
These are the changes that MASC made to these policies. No one here made the changes. There wasn't that level of discussion last time about taking big paragraphs out. Nope.
No, but that's what, that's what MASC...
MASC sends the policy with some of the old language in there to show you what they're, for example, this wishes the community, including parents and students, should be considered, it used to be down here. They put it up here at the end of the first, of this first paragraph.
Okay.
They're showing you...
This is our current one with these two paragraphs here. So, these two paragraphs were in the current one.
Right.
And then, the new version includes all of this additional stuff, right?
Right, okay.
So, these two paragraphs that are struck through on the current, were in, to your point, Debbie, were in the original.
Correct. These, the strike through doesn't represent discussion at the last meeting, it represents the MASC's recommendation about old language and policies versus new.
I thought this reflected our discussion from the last meeting, when we talked about what we wanted to see happen.
I think, my recollection, and it's not 100%, my recollection is that because we didn't have both policy subcommittee members here.
Right.
That while there was a lot of discussion, I don't think anyone ever moved any specific actions.
No.
We agreed to bring it back, and we also agreed to bring it back because these are complicated, you might need a third reading.
Correct.
And now, again, we're faced with a situation where we don't have both policy subcommittee members, so I think that sounds like a plan, but it's up to you.
But it should be, it should be unanimous.
If you see a place that you think that should be represented in there, why don't you bring that to us with the next reading?
The last paragraph that wasn't crossed out? Well, I guess we... The third to last paragraph?
All it says now is, "Following submission of a naming request, the school committee chairperson will specify a consideration period that allows for public comment, following which, the committee will deliberate and vote on the name."
Unanimous, so you add unanimously?
So, you could add it...
Add unanimously. The third to the bottom paragraph.
Third to last paragraph.
That's not crossed out.
Just...
And vote on the name.
Of the MASC version. So, our committee is saying that we'd like one more level of detail on this policy, which MASC did not recommend, but wouldn't necessarily disagree with either, that just says, as a committee, we'd like it to be unanimous.
Yes, right, the committee.
So, add that word.
Just so add that.
Yeah, just add one sentence at that point. That's a good...
A unanimous vote of the committee, blah, blah.
Is required.
Is required. And then, add the paragraph two from the old policy, right after the paragraph one.
Okay.
If you think that makes the most sense, yeah.
Well, for the committee's consideration, I think, we'll put it where, we put both those things where you think you want them.
So, the changes next time, then, we'll have the red line, because they'll be our changes, so it'll be a little more familiar in what you're using.
So, we'll use red for any, anything that came out of discussion.
Okay, who will committee be red? The whole process has been a little bit...
It was a little different this time, because they had given us all of that information.
Right, thank you, Janet.
All right, anything else on naming facilities? If not...
I recommend that we move that forward to a third week's reading.
Agreed. I agree, I don't know, do you want to vote on that, or consensus?
Yes, that makes, puts it in the book.
So, you're motioning that we move this to a...
I motion that the file FF, naming facilities, be moved forward to a third reading.
I second that.
For clarification.
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, okay. So, let's go back to BHE, use of electronic messaging by school committee members. We felt this one was okay, as is newly changed, recommended by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and the main addition here is the notion of text messages and social media postings are now included and called out as ways in which school committee members should not be discussing business and should exercise caution around. And I don't think there was any other changes on that one, so if you all are comfortable, we could take a motion to actually approve this new BHE.
I'll make a motion that we approve file BHE, use of electronic messaging by school committee members.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Two.
And then, we take up FFA, which used to be called naming existing facilities, which is now going to talk about memorials. And the main thing here, we talked about, as I recall, was that, or the intent here is that school facilities are not necessarily the right place to establish permanent memorials, and rather, that they should be in the form of perpetual awards or scholarships, as opposed to naming. Is that right? Is that what you all recall?
Yep. I think the one question was, as you read this, does it include school buildings and school property outside, or just the physical buildings? Or does it encompass all parts of school property? I think someone asked that question, or I did, I can't remember, but I think that, I'm not sure that this, I think that this is at risk for that interpretation.
Yeah, the wording they use is "school sites."
Right. And then, it says, "Permanent memorials within the schools." See, so, if I wanted one outside, I could say, "Well, it says school sites."
Right.
But it says you can't on a school site, and then...
I don't know.
Just wondering if that should be just...
Well, they're both, it's not as though they're saying, the way I interpret it, they're not opening one and not the other. They're saying neither one is appropriate. They're saying school sites should not serve as the main venue for permanent memorials, and then, they say, "Permanent memorials within the schools shall be limited." So, to me, they're both saying they don't feel schools are the right place, or school sites.
So, you could add, "Permanent memorials within the schools or on school campuses shall be limited in form." I don't know.
Yep.
Do you think we need to say that?
I do. Because, you know, everyone splits hairs and words when they're, and these are things that naturally have a lot of emotion to them, and so, I think it's always helpful when you have a situation that's going to involve a lot of emotion, a lot of grieving, and a lot of wanting to do well by that person's memory, that it's best to be as clear as possible, and to do it when we don't, when we're not trying to debate it.
Right.
Okay.
So, your suggestion once again, please, Debbie?
See, I always try to put myself ahead, so, let's say it's, you know, 10 years out, 20 years out, and this hasn't been changed, and the current school board doesn't, isn't the same, and somebody's reading this and saying, "Well, does that mean we can't put it outside, or it's only not on the inside, or it's only not on the outside?" And you want it to be unambiguous. That's the word.
Just to clarify, would not, this, every memorial that is currently in existence on school property, both within and outside, would stand unless there was a vote that committed to change that.
So, I think instead of saying, "Within the schools," should say, "On school property."
Maybe, good idea. Should, if a vote to remove such memorial, would we want that to be a unanimous vote as well?
On school property, because that means it doesn't matter if it's indoors, outdoors.
So, I think we're talking about two different things, so, let's get them both. So, Debbie is suggesting we consider, second paragraph, "Permanent memorials on school property shall be limited in form to perpetual awards or scholarships."
Covers both.
And I'm okay with that, I don't know how the rest is.
So, permanent memorials on school property.
Have I just confused it? Should have been limited in form to perpetual awards or scholarships. That mean, that's not really on property, is it, though?
I think that's okay. Your concern was, within the schools.
Yeah.
I think...
School property is within and without.
I understand your point.
Problem is within. Permanent memorials. I think it's within and without. What you say, on school property. See, there won't be memorials on school property, so now, I've just messed it up.
No, you're just being...
I'm trying to be cautious. I think school property covers it all.
Permanent memorials shall be limited in form to perpetual awards or scholarships.
Oh.
Well, what about the re, oh, does that, so, renaming facilities doesn't come under this?
Correct.
Like the Massey suite or whatever we've just done.
Correct. This specifically talks about the death of a student, the member of a staff, or a prominent community member. So, this is clearly a death in emotional time, someone saying, "Let's memorialize or perpetuate someone's memory."
Well, what about a library or something like that, when that comes up, you know?
Permanent memorials.
And I think what the...
Maybe it's fine as an emotional...
Well, how about, how...
Oh, that's a scholarship. You know what I'm saying?
Well, you're talking about a name.
But the Ahern School.
Right. Oh, right, that's a naming. It doesn't matter whether they're dead or alive.
So, that means we can't name schools again?
Like a bench, or a, okay.
You know what I mean?
Yes, I do know what you mean.
Like a symbol instead of, okay.
I think this, and I think this is a policy change, right? What they're saying is, you know, the death of someone should not be commemorated by creating a permanent memorial on a school.
On school property.
That's true, that's different than the way we've named schools before.
But I think, I think they're referring to memorials on sites, not naming sites.
Which has a different policy.
So, this is, you know, I guess, you know, trying to be sensitive here, we have a couple memorials on, one at the Ahern, one at the Borough School. Those are memorials on a site.
Right.
They're not the naming of the site.
Correct.
Good point.
Two at the Borough.
That's right.
And there's actually a small one up front, Taylor.
So, those are, those are actual memorials on the site versus the naming of a site.
And there's a distinction here because of the word "permanent," if there, God forbid, but if there were a tragedy and there's provision for a temporary, like the paper, the origami crane.
Oh, yes, yeah. Temporary is fine, but those types of permanent memorials...
Right, is what I'm saying, that there is that permanent is distinct.
So, maybe it's actually fine as is.
I think so.
Let's just leave it. I think now that I feel... Don't change to on school property? I wouldn't change a thing, I think that, I think, I get it. Doesn't that cover within and without?
Mm-hmm.
If you say on school property, though?
But that sentence is not referring to the memorial itself, that's referring to the fact that for a school, it should only be a perpetual award.
So, now, I'm interpreting within the schools as meaning school-related. So, school-related permanent memorial shall be limited in form to perpetual awards and scholarships.
Not the physical part.
What?
Not the physical part.
Not the physical part. I think within the schools makes you think of four walls and something inside. So, I guess it better change, if you want it, make it one be school-related permanent memorial.
Well, yeah, but if there's a change, that would make it clearer, because your original interpretation was within the school, within the schools gave you four walls.
That's why I think on school property covers both in and out.
I have a suggestion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, please, okay.
I have a proposal to accomplish, I think, what we're trying to. How about in the first paragraph, second sentence, we change the word "sites" to "property," and we say, "As places designed primarily to support learning, school property should not serve as the main venue for permanent memorials."
Okay, perfect.
And that takes care of Debbie's point that we might differentiate between sites, and then, you can leave the second sentence, or the second paragraph, just the way it is.
Perfect.
Perfect. Permanent memorials within the schools shall be limited to awards. Perfect. Permanent memorials within the schools shall be limited to awards. So that just says, you can do an award, you can do a scholarship.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yep.
So sites becomes property.
That's it.
That's all, one more.
One last, Janet actually asked the question, but should we have a removal be by a unanimous vote?
Right, so that's the next thing.
Yes.
And I would say yes for consistency.
I would say too.
So we can add the same sentence Janet, that we just added to the other file.
Well, but no.
Put in the word unanimous.
Okay. By unanimous, even better, yep.
By a unanimous vote.
That's good.
All right. Would the committee like to see these two changes in writing one more time? Or because they're just two words, do you feel comfortable approving?
I think word smithing, I'm comfortable with passing this tonight because it was just word smithing.
Approve as amended?
Approve as amended.
I'll make a motion that we approve file FFA memorials as amended.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we got to unanimity? Is that a word on that one?
If you want to use, you can use it.
We got the unanimity on that?
That's a word.
Thank you. And the last one is a brand new one, right? Domestic violence leave policy. And I remember the superintendent's comment on this, and I thought you offered good perspective, one of you did. Last meeting was that you felt this was an appropriate policy based on similar policies of similar type subject matter that we have today.
It is. It needs a little bit of work though. It's got, I don't know, this looks different from what we usually get from A C. It's got a lot of typos in it. Anyway, that's just me.
And our comment was, we were going to check this with Dan Brown.
Right, and I don't have that information back yet.
Okay.
So that has to go to third reading. But I would, I know Debbie's our, one of our policy guru, so.
Well, no, if, no, I do believe it would be correct for, for us to have the legal weigh in on this.
My main thought last time Debbie is that not just the wording in this, it's very similar to FMLA, for example. But the way this appears, it's going to entirely replace the old policy, GCCC, it seems like. But that doesn't make any sense to do that. So it's taking away another policy that I think you want to keep. So there's some confusion over the lettering of it, as well as the content and its relation to other, another. It's a complicated one. That's actually a most complicated one.
And Debbie, when you say the lettering of it, are you picking up on something I was going to ask? Which is the file number is different on the form than on our agenda.
Yes. So when Jana and I got back the next day, we looked up, see, again, did I make that copy and bring it with me? We looked up the policy that this referenced.
GCCC, which is attached in your packet.
Right.
It's the last one of the Foxborough policy.
Family medical leave.
There you go.
So that's the short one that it's replacing.
It's a family, family medical leave.
That was a much later one.
The family medical leave.
FPS policies, yep?
Yeah.
This is the one that the domestic violence is supposed to be replacing, and it just isn't.
Right. So you remember on the, the thing from the policy list from MASC that you should have? That says all the policy updates they've been doing? The note, what I noticed at the last meeting was the side note said that it replaces old policy GCCC, which is family and medical leave, which this should not replace, because this is narrowed to domestic leave.
I thought when we did our contract negotiations at that time, that we, Dan Brown rewrote this policy and that we updated it.
Well, no, he wrote the guidelines for staff members as to how family medical leave works.
And it's in the contract?
Yes, I remember that.
It's not a school committee policy.
I thought we redid the policy at that time.
No, because this just says you're going to comply by whatever the policy, the federal FMLA policy says. And so what we did, the old contracts used to say, we will comply. We used to say.
No, I remember it was lengthy.
It just says, it outlines for staff members similar to, to the old maternity leave policy, exactly how that plays out for them, so that they would have it all in one place. But this is new, but it can't replace this. It doesn't even reference this. So there's some kind of cross, this is complicated.
Why don't we check our notes?
Yeah, I think we need to.
And we have time to do that, if we're going to hold on this while we get counsel from legal.
This definitely has to.
So I'd like to recommend that we move this to, forward to a third reading until.
I would also request that if we, if Amy and I could meet with the policy subcommittee on that, because
Right.
It's so confusing that in no way I don't think would we have been ready to come back today and have this all together, even if I had gotten it back.
Until further clarification, this needs to be moved forward.
Correct.
For future reading.
I'll second that.
So what is your motion Debbie? I'm sorry.
We need to wait upon further clarification of this.
You move that the school committee delay approval.
Delay approval.
Pending further discussion of the subcommittee or?
Right, yeah.
And that way you don't have to bring it to us for a third reading, because it's not ready for a third reading.
It's not yet ready for a third reading. So delayed.
I second that.
Any further? All those in favor? Four zero. So Janet, we will look at FF again next meeting. And this one on domestic violence leave policy, we may just defer, depending on.
I think that will be ready next meeting, but then maybe the BGBE at the second meeting in October.
Well, won't these two be combined somehow? Or, or vote to keep that? All right, we need, we need a meeting.
We do need a meeting.
All right. Well, you know, I don't mind taking time on these, because once you vote policy in, it's kind of important.
To be, it's better to be clear. And have it fit our community.
Okay.
Agreed.
Everybody good? All right, superintendent joint goals for the 2017-2018 school year.
So, welcome to tonight. So usually this is the meeting where the superintendent presents his or her goals for the year. Since you, this is a hybrid year, Amy and I wondered if you would entertain the notion of us having joint superintendent's goals that we would both work on together for the next four months? And that then those same goals would be assumed by the new assistant superintendent, so there'd be a lot of continuity. And there are things that the leadership team are working on anyway. So first, how do you feel about the concept?
I like the concept.
Well, it makes sense, but just to make sure, just to make sure I'm thinking it through. So the alternative would be you have six months of goals and then Amy has six months of goals.
Yeah, at this point, three and a half.
How many days?
I wanted to slow down a little bit, actually.
Yes, I think it sounds like we have consensus. It makes sense.
Okay. So in thinking about that, we have put forward the goals that we feel are really worthy of our, our team of two to work on. And so we're both going to present them. We'll take turns.
Team of two.
So the first obviously is that we're very serious about ensuring a smooth succession. Not just including the successful transition of superintendency from me to Amy. But we also, surprisingly, when we actually started writing them down, we have several new members of the administrative team. So we will have a new assistant superintendent, hopefully by January first. We have a brand new Taylor Elementary School principal that you've met. We have a new MECO director that you haven't met yet, but you will and you should. She's fabulous and has already brought so much to us.
Who of us matter?
Oh, my, that's true. Wonderful. And we have three new department heads, science, world language, and music. And the world language is open because that department head just became assistant principal of the middle school. So we have a lot of internal leadership capacity and internal leadership development. And because, as you know, Mrs. Cassily went back to the classroom to teach third grade, which actually that was her origin. And it actually is sweet to see her there, because when I was a young teacher, and she was a young teacher, that's exactly where she was. And it just seems like full circle. And because of that, she, we have a new KDA curriculum director for ELA social studies who's support us. So we do have a lot of new leaders to develop. And so our time and attention has to go beyond our succession plan and really speak to a unified approach in supporting them.
One question. And I agree, that's a lot of change. And I agree, the smooth transition is the most important thing. But if you were still in place, weren't we going to do something about starting to put in place the social emotional learning study?
Well, that we are.
And we have that as part of the recommendations coming out for strategic plan. So we have that implementing the recommendations that came out of there. It's in the strategic plan.
And that will be updates to school committee, like what's happening with that, once before I go, and then once at the end of the year.
All right. So you would say, because it's there, we don't need it here.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we have lots of report. I don't view that any differently than when you have a science or an ELA curriculum review, where we don't put as a goal, implement the review, because I would hope that's something you just expect us to do and not put as a goal. But I think that we're actually discussing that, today's Monday, Wednesday, at our administrative team meeting. And, you know, here are the results of the report, what is going to be our plan for this year, what pieces does everybody own? So we'll have a lot to say about our progress this fall sometime, and then Amy will have a full report by the end of the year.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, let's see. If you want, we could add it as a second goal under district improvement, or under student learning, it could go either place.
Do we automatically do that?
But if you, if you have specific invested interest in it, then we can put it on here.
That would look like creating what we've, what we're starting to talk about. What is the action plan? What is the timeline? What, how is that going to be carried out? And who's responsible for what pieces?
And don't forget, you already have it on your district goals, the joint goals that we share that we did in July.
Yeah.
You put it on here, so we didn't feel, we needed to put it on here.
Okay, I'm convinced.
Because this is going to make us update you anyway, even if you forget. It's right there for us.
So it's documented in several other places?
It is.
Okay.
All right, second. Okay. So when we were looking at student learning goals and thinking about what is it from our level, because we're not in a classroom, but how can we impact with students? So the achievement of students, obviously, is one that comes to mind. But with the OECD, which is the assessment that was given last fall to random fifteen-year-olds, the information that came back from that really shows how our students compare on an international level. And to use that data going forward and how we can look at math, science, and ELA, and how that's going to play out with the other initiatives that we have, but more specifically looking globally. It's in the strategic plan. That was one that we really felt was an important one to address.
And we are, we have the basic results back. We haven't yet. We're just starting to work with our teams on what are the curriculum implications and the action steps. So maybe, maybe at, say, the second meeting in October, or the first one in November, depending when we have time, we could at least come to you with what the results showed, because we haven't had that report yet, so that you know what our starting point is.
Sounds like a good idea. Any comments? Everybody good? Silence is consensus, okay. Moving right along. Well, you know, you guys put a lot of thought into these things, we know.
Yes.
So the next one is about a three-year district technology plan, which we've been keeping you up to speed with where we are. As you know, we ended the five-year technology plan a year early, because it had become obsolete and we had done most of it anyway. So we stopped that last June, had the full report on progress on that plan. And what we're working on now is identifying overarching themes that should be in the next technology plan. And then by January, Amy and her team will have the actual draft of the plan up for your review and consideration. So I think at the next meeting, we're going to come back and talk to you about the overarching themes and the focus of the plan as we see it so far. So that if there's anything else that you see as a direction within that plan, Amy will know early. And as they roll out, then we'll have that already. So you'll probably see a little snippet of the direction of the future plan at the October second meeting.
And this one, you know, under the concept of district improvement, there's a lot of things that could be on here, right? Progress on the Borough and that sort of thing. But I guess we would say that all that's in our plan and goals document as well, so you don't have to call it out here. Okay.
I'm excited to hear, just as an aside, I'm really excited to hear what the next steps are in the district technology plan. And it just blows me away continually where we are, based on where we were five years ago, when there was no plan. And we didn't have, I mean, this is, it's just amazing. I'm sorry, I'm not articulating it very well, but, but it's really impressive. What has been done, and I think the three, the next phase is going to be even more exciting, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at.
Think about for the parents of young children, what those young children's educational experience will be like as these things come online.
Well, even just working, so the Technology Steering Committee, that's what we spent the afternoon up until, literally at ten past five, we usually end at five. Ten past five, stops. We just, everyone is so into it as far as looking at the themes and what it's going to look like. But to your point, we're in a very different place than we were when we developed the last one.
Yes, absolutely.
And I think we'll all have the same vision. So we, at the August administrative retreat, we asked the administrators there to say, what do you think the upcoming themes are? We asked for their written input. Then Amy worked with tech team for the same today. If we can do the same with you at the October second meeting, then they'll be off and running.
Yeah.
Great. And last one?
Last one is one you've heard me say a lot, so I'll let Amy say it.
I noticed how you had her read this.
I didn't realize, but yeah, this is definitely a handoff.
To continue to implement the plan for our outdoor athletic complex with having a full campus. And I know that when that is able to be achieved, Debbie will be there.
Even if I'm a walker.
She'll be leading, she'll be leading the parade.
Even if I'm using a walker, I'll be there. Even if I'm not of sound mind, one of you will pick me up.
We'll get you there. We'll get you there.
You're promising. You're laughing, but it's a promise.
It's going to happen sooner than.
It's a worthy goal. Than goals that are easy to check.
That's true.
Well, it's exciting to think that the concession stand and restrooms will be built this year during the school year, right Bill?
Actually, I've got a meeting with the architects Wednesday. We think we've got the final design a hundred percent buttoned up. And so then they'll complete the construction documents, so we can get going on it. We're working with a number of contractors to just confirm things like the sewerage and stuff like that, how our connections will go. But yeah, I think, I really would like to get the foundation in the ground before the winter, so we can keep moving with it.
That'll be exciting. I think, I think because that is a community field and so many people use it, I think when that construction happens, I think people are just going to get excited again.
They will.
I agree.
I agree.
Amy, is there anything, as you prepare to take the reins, is there anything you would have wanted on here? I'm sure you would have put it on here, but.
We would have. I mean, we sat down and really reflected on where are we thinking about with the SEL, the ELA review? Because when it comes to like the example on the student learning goal for us, that is something that we have the overarching responsibility for. But where do we feel like that we can make a difference as far as the focus that's there? So I think that's probably the one we spent the most time talking about, because it's woven within the strategic plan. It's definitely something that we talk about within the technology plan. And having students be able to be ready, college career ready, and what it looks like on the global scale. We hear about Massachusetts, when it's separated out, that Massachusetts, you know, is highly competitive. But now we have the opportunity to look at Foxborough High School. And we are our students within Massachusetts in that context.
I'm excited to hear that too.
So would anybody like to move to approve the joint superintendent's performance goals?
I will make that motion.
I'd like to second that.
I do have a question though, before we.
Well, we're into further discussion. Thank you for motioning, and now we're into discussion.
I just, I know it's not on here, but you are continuing the instructional rounds.
We are.
Because I, you had, I know you had it as an ongoing goal for two years. And, and I just, I was assuming that you were continuing it as, as.
We absolutely are.
Because you've got so much information from it.
And we're going to stay with, we're going to stick with student engagement, one more year.
Excellent.
So we have plans for that, and we'll definitely, you know, update you on how that's going. But we're going to stick with it. We're going to take the tools. We spent a lot of time on that at administrative retreat. And we're going to take what we know now and go and continue to see if we've gotten it right, and if the tool is useful for teachers as well. So actually, we started sharing the results of what we learned last year with faculty at the, at the, one of the PD days. I, we had all, had all the elementary teachers, and I did the update, here's what we learned. Thanks for letting us, you know, come in your, you know, when you, they're so generous about letting us come in their classroom. And, and we don't make appointments, so it's like, we're here. And they're like, oh, what's going on? Like, well, we're trying to figure out student engagement, what it means. So they're so welcoming that they deserve to know what we learned, because it's something that we're expecting them to be accountable for and something we're supposed to hold them accountable for. And it better be something that we all understand, and it wasn't. So we did that, and we're going to be updating the middle and high school.
Thursday's middle school.
Thursday's middle school, and then high school, I think we'll figure out how to do that. So that by, by October, all of the, or sometime in October, all of the teachers will have found out what we learned and have in hand the guidelines that we have for them. So it's going well.
Great. Thank you for that.
And I think that that actually connects back to, to the professional practice goal here and providing that leadership to all of those new members by doing that work.
Absolutely. I wasn't trying to suggest that it be your goal.
No, but it does, it intertwines with it.
I agree with that, definitely. Great. My question was answered.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve the superintendent joint goals? All those in favor? Four zero. I was going to motion that we call it the Thelma Louise Goals.
You can always borrow my convertible. Yeah, don't be doing that.
Nope.
All right. Dr. Burdose has done some proactive work ahead of the committee, which I thanked her for, to get us ready for doing a search for an assistant superintendent. And I'm not surprised she was proactive and initiated it before we did much about it, because she probably wants some help, or will want some help.
Will want some.
So would you like to provide an update with your thoughts?
Sure. So one of the first things that was done was looking at the job description. And as we know, in education, things change and continue to increase as far as demands. So the job description was updated first. And then the position was posted on school spring, and then within professional associations. And applications will actually close on September twenty ninth. And we are already having, I haven't looked other than at the number, but it's a lot of interest.
Three weeks open.
Three weeks. It will be open. And then the initial screening team, which is where we're going to need some help here from school committee, that team will meet beginning in October. And it will be representative of teachers and administrators from all levels, parents, and then we'd like school committee members on that team as well.
We talked about two members?
Two members, yes.
So give that some thought.
And the commitment is, is five evenings is what we're looking at as far as a couple of meetings. No, so October the third would be the first meeting. And then as far as convening that team with everyone together, and then coming back again on October tenth. And then looking at interviewing the middle of October with semifinalists sent my way at October twenty third. And then taking that next, conducting of interviews with those candidates, and then having a recommendation to the school committee by November the sixth.
Which is, which is nice timing, considering we want this person in the job.
January one.
January one, bless you.
So at this point, we've reached out to ask for parents' interest as far as being part of the committee, for teachers as well. And so we're in the middle of waiting to hear back. And again, people are very involved in the. And again, people are very involved, and they see how important it is to hiring. We know that it's in hiring, and we have a lot of willing participants, which is wonderful, that people are so willing to give their time.
If no one minds, I would like to step up and be one of the school representatives, unless you two wanted to do it, or...
I'd like to be one as well.
Okay. So, Tina and I?
Are you okay with that, Bevy?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
I suspect we'll be around signing warrants and having our ear to the ground.
Oh, I just did one, so he'll probably be fine with it, then.
I'm not talking for, I'm sorry, Chris.
All right. So, Amy, anything else on the update?
No, I think that pretty much, pretty much takes care of that. It's going to be a busy next number of weeks.
It will. And I'm sure if you need more help, others of us would be happy to help.
Of course.
Do you want to nominate the two ladies to...
Oh, yes. I would like to nominate Marilyn Wise and Tina Bellinger as the school committee representatives for the Assistant Superintendent Search Committee.
Can I second that nomination?
I know, I'm not sure with only...
I'll second that nomination.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Bevy's already in favor, me too. Thank you, thank you in advance for doing the work.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I've, I've always been fascinated with the process.
I love the interview process. I haven't done it in so many years, so I'd like to do it again.
Yep. That's okay.
Great. Thank you again for your leadership on that. School committee appointment, delegate to the MAS C convention. No wonder we left Bevy out. The next item's for her.
I love if we nominate Bevy as our delegate to the MAS C convention in November.
I second that.
And the joke, in case anyone in Foxborough doesn't know, is that Beverly, how many years have you been our delegate now?
Many.
It's 200 years.
Many.
Many.
Not only that, she got the lifetime achievement award last year.
Lifetime Achievement Award. The whole place gets excited when our car pulls into the parking lot.
Everyone there.
Bevy's here. Are you willing to serve, Ms. Lord?
It would be an honor for me to serve again. Yes. I thoroughly enjoyed this from, I come home exhausted, because there are so many, you can't take all the workshops that you would like. And it's so stimulating to be around people who are excited about education.
Well, you do a great job.
Thank you.
It's amazing to be at that conference and see how many people she knows. She knows literally everyone at the conference. Everyone who's on the school committee across the entire state.
Not the newbies, though. Come on, give me a break.
Doesn't take long.
I don't, I don't vet them before the convention.
Marilyn, you want to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Beverly Lord as delegate to MAS C convention.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Unanimous with gratitude?
With gratitude.
Much gratitude.
Mr. Yuchna?
With pleasure.
With pleasure, nice. Mr. Yuchna, update on Borough School Project.
Okay. We're approaching our next milestone, which is the submission of the PDP, which is the preliminary design program to the MSBA. That is this Friday, the 22nd, that it needs to be in there. And part of that package basically breaks down whether we did just a repair to the building, what the cost would be. We have generated three different renovation addition options that we're looking at. And we've also put together pricing, or a scenario under which we would do a new building, and the pricing along with that as well. As you can imagine, there's, it's a lot more than just the pricing. It's really how would you handle the students in this transition. There's a lot of other factors that will go into us making our final decision as to what's the appropriate one to move forward. But this is the milestone that gets us to make that next decision into the November timeframe. So, we seem to be, it was a tight timeline. I think KBA's done a phenomenal job kind of managing us through the process. And at this point, I believe we're down to just a few minor documents that go into the folder to be completed. It is about a four-inch-thick notebook with documentation. Every engineer that's worked on the site already has comments on all five of those options as to what they see as positives and negatives. So, again, a lot of work. And then we will obviously have a meeting with the MSBA at some point down the road once they are ready to review this package with us to make our decision to move forward.
Any questions for Bill?
Thank you for all your work again.
We have a good committee. Fortunately, everybody's sharing the load on this one.
That's good. That's good.
Not just me.
Speaking of sharing the load, thanks to Amy and Michelle and Sandra putting it to the educational plan that I talked a good game about, but I'm like, why am I doing? So, anyway, I suggested the structure and then asked her how she was coming along, and evidently, quite well. It's all done. So, yes, team effort. Good job, though, it's really good.
Bill, so completing the paperwork now, and then at some point be ready for a meeting with the MSBA?
They'll, they'll notify us of their, based on their schedule, when we will go in to review that with them.
And I know that's out of your control, but if you had to guess, speculate?
Oh, I would say it would probably be within three to four weeks.
Three to four, that's okay.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, because then by, you know, end of November, beginning of December, we have had to make a final decision on which of the options we're moving forward with, and actually start going forward with that design option. So, it's, again, it's a, it's a quick timeframe, even though it's taking a long time to go through it, there's just so many steps in this process.
Wow, so that decision of which of those options, by end of December, did you say?
Yeah, we will have made our decision, and that's where the architects will start to go through. The next big funding request to the town will be once we get to what our final option is and get firm pricing on the real design. Again, we're just dealing with schematic designs now, just drawings, if you will. But once we pick the final one to go forward, then obviously the documentation and the in-depth information on every component to that starts to happen.
Still some time.
Yeah. And so, then we'll be going to, you know, once we have that done again, which will be in the spring, I believe, we'd be going for, for funding. So, at this point, we're funded through the schematic feasibility stage.
I thought the article in the reporter was helpful last week.
Yep.
I heard a lot of talk about it around the soccer fields and all, you know, people saying, well, I didn't know, didn't realize building a new building was, you know, essentially the same cost as, you know...
Yeah, and the, obviously, any time you deal with a structure, in this case, this is, when we did the high school, it wasn't a gut renovation, it basically was a renovation, okay? When you say a gut renovation, you're really going wall-to-wall, replacing all of the electrical, replacing all of the mechanical, and so on. In the borough's case, as a much smaller building, because of the way it was designed, and it's, and it would be similar to the Taylor down the road, is that you really have to go wall-to-wall to get the building to be what you want it to be for, you know, 40-year proposition. So, you know, when you do that, yes, you don't have to get into site work and stuff. But when, when you saw that number in the paper that was talking about new versus ad reno being very similar, there are some very distinct differences. Again, there's nothing in that number for the new that would talk about where we would just, you know, disposition the kids for a year while you're doing that. There's nothing in there that really talks about what you're going to do on site work, because you'd be changing the entire site there, which we won't do under an ad reno. So, there, there's a lot of components, not to mention the way the state would reimburse us is different. So, the town would bear a higher cost on new as well. We get additional points for renovating a building because of reuse, if you will.
It doesn't include demo either, does it?
It, it did include demo.
It did.
Yes. So, it's not exactly apples to apples, and that's why you have to really understand the programs you're looking at. And that's what will be feathered out, I believe, over the next few months, as far as understanding each one of those detailed levels, and really making some conscious decisions on, on what is the least disruptive to the students in the district. We do not have a facility that we can move 300 children to, you know, for a year, which would be...
You don't have an extra building to hang around to do that.
And unfortunately, when you look at the Borough School, the, as much as it's a big site, 23 acres, a lot of it's wet to the right side of it. As you come in the main area, all that's, you know, wetlands that we own. Out in the back, between the wetlands, the train, and the ledge on the side, there's a very small footprint for where a building could go. We couldn't fit the building, so the back doesn't work. So, literally, the only place you could put new and keep the building there is in front of the existing building.
Sort of angled, though, like back toward the field.
Yeah, it creates an odd design, because you can't fit a certain way, which they did. They had to figure out exactly how would you fit this building. It would have to be a two-story building, which is not our preference, but, I mean, it could be, but, you know, our preference on an elementary like this would be to one story if we could. So, again, there's, there's a lot of considerations, but all these points are coming out now, and part of that book shows all those issues. So, again, I think it'll be easier for the committee to start making, honing in on what's the right way to go.
That's great.
It's an exciting process.
It is exciting, yeah. And as Bevy said, all that work, thank you, Bill. So, I'm sure it'll be i's dotted and t's crossed when we look at all these options. Okay, any questions for Bill? Nope, okay. Acceptance of donation, Jerry Roy Scholarship Fund.
Right. So, at the last meeting, the committee accepted the first round total of $14,018 of donations for the Jerry Roy Scholarship Fund. And since then, we've had additional donations totaling $2,008 that we'd like to accept tonight. However, I think up to this point, they probably are going to be trickling in, so we might wait a while and, and wait till a few months and have you accept the rest of the donations. But right now, there's total new donations of $2,080 if the committee would like to accept those.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we accept the donation of $2,080 towards the Jerry Roy Scholarship Fund. With gratitude.
Yep, I would like to second that with gratitude.
Any further? All those in favor? 4-0. So, the total's up to $16,098.
It is.
That's great. You know, don't know why this pops into my head, but it makes perfect sense not to bring in the trickling in to each committee member, or each, each meeting. But if we sit on people's checks for a while before accepting them, does that become an issue for the donate, the donators?
Well, maybe once a month instead of every two weeks, maybe.
Yeah, because I'd hate to have people wonder why their check wasn't getting paid.
I mean, you could have every meeting from now to whenever with trickles. So, maybe, maybe once a month?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yes, much appreciation to the donors. It's a worthy memory to establish with Jerry.
Bill, Greeley Family Memorial Scholarship Trust Fund.
Yes, so this is actually not going to fall under the school committee at this point. But what happened was Audrey Louise Greeley passed away in 2015. In her will, she divided up between her siblings 80% of her estate and 20% she decided she wanted to give to a scholarship fund for two Foxborough High School students graduating, going on to college. I did do a quick look-up here, which I got for Google. She actually worked for the Foxborough Company for her whole career. She retired from there in 1987. She was a member of the Foxborough Historic Society. She volunteered as a voter registrar, and she was a member of the Republican Committee. Her donation to set up this trust for the scholarship fund was in excess of $92,000. So, as it's been done right now, Frank Spillane, who was handling the estate, basically set up the, he and I set up the trust in, to be its own trust at this point. We will deposit the money in there. I will be the trustee for the next few years while I'm around, and then we will move it on to somebody else. But it basically, I will write the trust documents up and the, establish the guidelines, and I will do it similar to the way we've done other ones, where Foxborough High School principals and guidance will look for the candidates and make the appropriate thing. It's a designed scholarship, which is based on the income that the trust can make in a given year, and preference, not requirement, preference would be given to one student who was going in the way of engineering and one that was going in the way of agriculture.
Oh, excellent.
So, so what my, my assumption will be is that we're getting it at this point in the year. Obviously, we're not going to have much interest this year, so what I would assume we'll do is, is put it together, get the best interest we can, not do a scholarship in the FY '18 year, but start it in the FY '19 year, which hopefully would then give us, you know, a nice scholarship each year for two students. Again, it's not going to be money that sits in the scholarship fund, which is what you have control over or oversee, I guess.
Trust fund.
All right.
So, you don't need anything from us tonight?
No, no. Just kind of a generosity, thank you to...
That is wonderful, wonderful.
Obviously, thinking of the school committee, or thinking of the school students.
Yep, fabulous.
Absolutely.
What was her name?
Audrey Louise Greeley.
Audrey Louise.
That was very, very generous.
She has siblings that are still...
Yes, she had family members that received, four different family members have received the rest of it.
It's wonderful.
Well, I have to thank the Greeley family. That's great.
Wonderful.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Other matters?
I just have one, believe it or not.
Come on.
Oh, really?
Come on.
Tina said she would spot me, as usual, around all the important stuff. I thought our first home game on Jack Martinelli Field was awesome.
Very exciting.
A win would have been the icing on the cake. We didn't need icing, we just needed cake. It was a great game on a great field, named after a great man. And our high school marching band's first halftime show on the field, under their new director, Aaron Bush, was wonderful. So, cheerleaders performed all the usual jaw-dropping tricks. It was just a, it was just a great show and a great game all the way around, other than the final score.
It was a beautiful night.
It was, indeed.
But I think even the final score was, someone said King Phillips ranked second in the state. Does that sound good?
Somebody sitting here has a high schooler at King Phillips. But she doesn't play football.
So, there's no bias.
It was.
It was good. It was good.
What'd she forget, Tina?
Well, Wednesday night, we have a tour at the Orpheum at 6:30 for our new and exciting musical theater program, which...
That's what I should have remembered.
I just reminded you, so...
So, as you...
This coming Wednesday?
So, as parents got an email from me that said we're trying to reinstitute the high school musical, and my, I always try to remember, like, when do we lose these things? So, I know that, I've told the parent group, we have a small but very passionate parent group. We're hoping to have a bigger group after Wednesday night. But my son, who graduated in 2003, was in the high school musical, so we lost it sometime between then and 2007, when I came back. So, I was gone four years, and it was gone. So, you know, I'm really excited that maybe we can all work together. I think this is definitely going to be one of those, you know, takes-a-village moments. But we have a plan. We've met a few times with the... I'm calling them the theater boosters, so if they could organize in a formal fashion, that'd be great. So our plan is to meet this Wednesday at 6:30 at the Orpheum, where the venue is going to be for the future musical, which removes one of our barriers, which is the competition for stage time here at the high school. So that takes away a big issue that we've had. And we have a plan as to who's going to work together and fund what, and what do we expect ticket sales to be? And I want to compliment Bob Hickey, who's the new owner of the Orpheum, who's been very helpful. He's not only helping with this open house and with the venue, but he's also going to be helping our theater boosters do some fundraising and has some creative ideas for them to consider. So we hope there's no sign up, you don't have to register. We just hope to have as many people as we can come Wednesday night from 6:30, 7:30. You're going to get a tour of the new Orpheum, you're going to hear a little bit about Bob's plans for revitalizing that as a community focus, as it should be, and to help the revitalization of the downtown area as well, and also to hear a little bit about what we're trying to accomplish with the high school musical. Our theater program has had some wonderful improvements the last few years, and we're very proud of what's happening with the theater program, but that doesn't include the big splashy musicals. So we hope to be able to get that back, and that's one of the things that, as you know very well, we've been working on for several years. So I hope to see that come to fruition, and I think we're all cautiously optimistic. So 6:30 Wednesday evening at the Orpheum.
Exciting. I saw Mr. Hickey Saturday night, and he's very excited about this, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thanks, sorry.
I got your back.
I know. I should have looked at my calendar.
It's okay.
That's what I usually do.
You got Tina.
You know, I become complacent.
Oh, no, not you.
No, never.
That's what I have to remember for other matters. I'm like, well, Tina will remember.
Tina, what else?
Well, actually, I have a couple. Well, first, Homecoming is this Friday, so we have our second game at Jack Martinelli Field in two weeks. But this is Spirit Week and Homecoming Week, so it's a very exciting time here at the high school, and hopefully everybody will have fun with that. I did want to... Bill, I have signed up for those, that M-I-A-A seminar program. Barbara Kelly has signed me up for a webinar a month between now and May. So I'm trying to work on those extra credits, but I know she keeps telling me via email to let the other school committee members know that any seminars you take can get us credit, so could you explain that a little bit more?
So I would actually even think that at the conference that you go to, if you go to, like, anything that's more like an educational seminar that's trying to advance, you know, policies, you know, just different things, if you get the, like, the flyer or the agenda as to what that particular seminar is and bring it back, we get credits for those type of things with the insurance company. So if it's...
So what kind of... What am I looking for? We want to make this clear, because it sounds like it's athletics. M-I-A-A is athletics, so just people watching at home saying, what is...
I-I.
M-I-A-A, just one little flip of a letter, is the insurance.
Right. Maya is our insurance company.
Reduces the amount we pay.
Right, it's just like any safety procedures you put in place gets you insurance credits. So if you think of anything we do for prevention...
Legal seminars that, you know, are basically in place to keep school committees out of trouble, that you take anything that's a policy-driven, you know, review would be something that they would potentially give us credit for. So all we have to do is submit, you know, when you took it, if you could get, like, a flyer from the, you know, the conference itself that talks about that particular one, that's what we would submit with who took it, you know, the fact that you were there and...
Okay.
All right, and I'll double-check before I go with you.
Sure.
Oh, just see which is...
Yeah, we can actually send it over.
So we can know which one, okay.
Great.
And then also, what will be offered will be published before that, so you and I can sit down and look at it.
Yeah, well, I would send it right over to...
Barbara Kelly.
To Maya, yeah, and just let them say which ones they would say is a positive.
That's good.
This is, I mean, I have to give Tina a lot of credit and thank her, but, you know, it is the one area, to be honest with you, in all of the credits, and we saved, like, $47,000 last year as a town by doing this type of work, but we didn't get very much on the school committee side. There isn't a lot of opportunity on the school committee side, other than the webinars and a few other things. But again, anything we could do just isn't that much more contributing. Obviously, we do all the stuff on the maintenance and stuff, so we do get credit for that, too, but this is specific to school committee.
I thought if we started here in September, maybe we could do better this year.
We'll have a great year this year.
So there is that. So that was one thing I had that I wanted to mention, and I wanted to ask you, Bruce, if you had the opportunity to speak with the chair of the Board of Selectmen about how we can back them up on the charter school reimbursement?
We have not connected yet, but that's still on my list.
I just want to follow through on that because I do think it's important to give them our support because it certainly affects, you know, all, the whole town, including us.
Yep, agreed.
And that's all I have.
Okay, Debbie?
I'm fine tonight.
Amy?
I'm good.
Great.
Marilyn?
Congratulations on a smooth opening of school, all of you.
Bill?
Good.
Janet?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, I'm going to offer just one, and we're a little ahead of schedule.
We are way ahead of schedule, this is great.
This is going to take a couple minutes, but I think everyone will find this interesting. I read this, and I said I got to print this and bring it to the committee. This is the output of a Gallup survey. And I'm always thinking that when you... I'm of the mind that whenever you read a survey, you have to be careful how much stock you put in it because someone else could do another survey that could produce different results. But in this time of superintendent change, and we talk about how fortunate we are to have had Debbie here with her instructional focus and Amy here with her instructional focus, and tonight we saw two of our new department heads and their excitement about instruction, and we often talk as a committee about what a good place we're in with our leadership. I just want to read the results of this study. This was... This comes out of the T-H-E journal, which is an education journal, and the title is "Superintendents Say Finding Quality Educators Is a Major K-12 Challenge." And this is dated September 13th, so it's a few days old. I won't read all of it, but I'll read some of the highlights. "Many superintendents value teachers and principals who create excitement about the future and say this quality is, quote, 'extremely important' for preparing students to succeed in school and beyond. However, finding enough quality educators is sometimes difficult to do, as cited by two out of every three superintendents polled in a recent survey who believe that the quality of new teacher and principal candidates in their district is declining." Let me just stop right there. How fortunate are we in Foxborough? I don't think we would say our quality of new teacher and principal candidates is declining, and I would attribute that directly to our academic leadership and instructional focus. Gallup conducted an online survey of hundreds of district superintendents for the Gallup 2017 Survey of K-12 School District Superintendents, which reports their opinions on important topics and policy issues facing education. The only issue superintendents are more likely to perceive as a greater challenge this year than in 2013 is improving the academic performance of under-prepared students. So they find that to be the top. Budget shortfalls are still a challenge for districts as well, cited by 73% of respondents both years. Not that we don't have budget shortfalls or budget constraints, but if you think about where we are with the town and the town's support, I again read that, and I live this, and I'm sure we all see this in other districts we interact with, but... Meanwhile, state and federal assessment now ranks only as a mid-level concern, with about 2/3 of respondents expressing these demands would be a challenge. So it seems like we've gotten a handle on all of that reporting that was driving us crazy, not that it doesn't still, but we figured out how to manage that. On another positive note, districts are having less difficulty with updating curriculum. Around 69% of superintendents said revamping curriculum was a major challenge in the previous survey, but only 50% answered the same this year. And we kind of have that humming along, I think, with our curriculum updates. "Superintendents are rather concerned by the shortage of teachers and principals willing to design strategies for students' long-term success. Among various strategies or initiatives designed to foster student success after graduation, superintendents are most likely to rate having teachers who create excitement for the future as extremely important to achieving that end," according to the report of findings. "They prefer candidates who can teach a rigorous academic core, even in early education." I mean, that, to me, is what we strive to do in Foxborough. I'm almost done. "2/3 of respondents said they have positive relations with their school board, but a sizable amount do not. Close to 1 in 5 superintendents have considered leaving their role as a result of their school board."
Wow.
That's not why you're leaving, right?
No. Myself and the other cat, I always say I have a very supportive and prepared school board. Knowledgeable.
"These reasons may be why many superintendents are losing value in their work. 42% said they are engaged in their job, while 52% are not engaged."
Wow.
Again, this is one survey, but think about, think about how glad we are we don't have that challenge.
Definitely don't.
"Gallup defines, quote, 'engaged workers' as those that tend to be more productive, psychologically committed, and emotionally connected to their role. The survey found that the district's location in which they work may impact superintendent engagement, with 58% of superintendents in urban areas saying they are engaged compared to 36% in rural areas." Isn't that surprising?
Could you do that statistic once more, please?
Yep, yep. The survey found that the district's location in which they work may impact superintendent engagement, with 58% of superintendents in urban areas saying they are engaged compared to 36% in rural areas. And that's probably the two opposite extremes of where we are, right? I think we're in the middle of that.
Oh, yeah, we're in suburbia. I wonder why they didn't report that.
Yeah, I'm curious about that, actually.
So I just read that and thought, I wanted to share that because I think, you know, it's an interesting way for us. We're... I appreciate that this committee always does an assessment of how we're doing and tries to be thoughtful about, are we on track? To me, that made me feel very good about where we are and the leadership we have and...
The teachers we have.
The teachers we have. We saw good examples of that tonight.
I think it's probably true that if here, the way we have a collective vision about how we should be, if you're not engaged and passionate about your work, you're probably not working here anymore, no matter what level you are at, because we do have a purpose and a mission and a passion for what we do. And, but I can't say... I think I'm surprised by those numbers, but I can't say that Amy and I don't know other superintendents who don't feel as purposeful and passionate and as engaged as we do. And I think that's one of the things we talk about a lot, that we feel lucky to be where